Good evening. At this time, if you'll remember to silence your phones, and we'll advise you that these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak for them. It's available at the entrance and present it to the City Clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. This time, I will call to order the City Council and the City Council's successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting for the City of Grand Terrace, this date April 24th, no, this date April 24th, 2018. We'll have an invocation given tonight by Pastor Alger Keo of Azure Hills Seventh-day Adventist Church, and then I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. So, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, again this evening, we thank you for the opportunity of gathering and being able to conduct the business of this city. This is a city that we love. We love the people that reside here. We love the facilities that can be provided. We love the education that's taking place, and those that are protecting us, both in fire and in the police, and we ask that you would continue to be with all of them, that you would bless each employee of the city, that as they work every day, they may be honoring to you and to the city, and they uphold high standards. We thank you, Lord, even for the animals within our community, and for the new dog park that has just been opened, and the opportunity to see those dogs for the first time run around in that place brings joy to our hearts. So with joy this evening, we seek your presence and your wisdom and your blessing, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our country's flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Alger. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Protem Robles.
Present.
Mayor Mcnebo.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We have three special presentations tonight, and the first one is a commendation to Boy Scout Andrew Shablie in attaining his rank of Eagle Scout. We also sent this to his court of honor, but I wanted to read it tonight. City of Grand Terrace commendation, Andrew Shablie. Whereas Troop Forty is part of the Arrowhead District in the California Inland Empire Council located in Southern California, and whereas Andrew Shablie has been a member of Troop Forty, Grand Terrace, California for the past seven years, and whereas Andrew worked with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Rodeo Committee to paint the rodeo stage and photography stand, and whereas Andrew, along with nine volunteers, worked over 63 community service hours to complete the project, and whereas Andrew Shablie achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, scouting's highest rank. Now therefore, I, Darcy Mcnebo, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby thank and commend Eagle Scout Andrew Shablie for his hard work, dedication, and loyalty to the City of Grand Terrace and its citizens and its community. And this was presented on the 21st of April 2018, signed by myself and all of my council colleagues. I just wanted to take an opportunity to let the public know, again, what fine young men we have in Troop Forty, and they certainly achieve for this community. So we'll move on to our next special presentation, which is an American Red Cross blood drive presentation. Is Becky Cogley, Business Development Manager here?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and to the City Council, to Mr. Duffy, and to all the residents here at Grand Terrace. A couple of short weeks ago, I approached the city manager's office and said, "We really need your help." The Red Cross is made up of volunteers primarily. Matter of fact, over 90% of all the people that work on behalf of the American Red Cross are volunteers, and without all of you, everybody in this room and in your community, we do not exist. And part of what we do besides the humanitarian services aspect of the Red Cross is we are the largest blood collection agency in the United States. And in order for us to keep the local blood supplies healthy, we need to reach out to all of our community members. So I'm proud to announce that the City of Grand Terrace is hosting its blood drive on August 1st, from 1:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. here in this building in the community room. And I offer this invitation to everybody here in City Council and all the residents to please sign up to actively come and donate, and to ask those that you know in the community to come and donate. We really, really need the help in the local hospitals. We dug ourselves out of one of the worst emergency blood shortages in the United States in decades over this last summer. We crawled ourselves out of that and went right back into a critical shortage over this winter because of all the bad weather, the fires in California, and across the U.S., thousands of blood drives were canceled. So we are anticipating that moving into the summer, it's going to be another rough one. Nobody should have to go without blood whenever they are sick or injured when they walk into a hospital. But the only way it gets there is through the generosity of the rest of us. So I'm going to go through a little part of this presentation, just to give some of you some information, and then that should be accessible to the council members at large through the city manager's office. If I can operate it. So the impact is to you, your community, and the Red Cross, and it's an opportunity for all of us to save lives. Matter of fact, if one person donates blood, they can save, in theory, up to three people. Why? Because the local hospitals ask us to separate out the parts, and all of those different parts help different people for different reasons. There are benefits to all of us, and the experience is that most of us don't get to say that we actually get to save lives on a regular basis, and this is one way to do that. The American Red Cross's mission is to, it prevents allevi- and alleviates human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing, excuse me, by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. And again, I want all of you in this room to really understand that you all are the Red Cross. For every dollar that comes into the Red Cross, over 90 cents goes back into our local So every hour of the day, more than 1,650 people are helped by the American Red Cross. Almost 6 million people receive life-saving first aid CPR and AED training, and that would be the little machines that actually help start your heart. 393 million weather emergency alerts are sent out. About 369,000-plus services go to our members and veterans and civilians out in the field. So we have an actual department called Service to Armed Forces, and we're actively involved at every military installation and to all those people that are retired or active. 64,000 times every year, the victims of nearly 64,000 disasters rely on the American Red Cross for immediate help. This last year, with all of the bad hurricanes and the fires that occurred, the Red Cross responded to more emergencies and disasters than the previous four years combined. Since 2000, we've helped vaccinate more than 2 billion children against measles and preventing approximately 17.1 million childhood deaths. And then, as far as blood is concerned, 6,800,000 products were processed from 4.8 million units of blood that were collected from nearly 2.8 million volunteer donors. And a little unknown fact here in California, so, and in the U.S., only 38% of the entire U.S. population is eligible to donate blood here in the States. And of that percentage, in California, less than 4% are donating. So our lovely state is considered a deficit state, and that means that blood banks, and we're the largest in the U.S. and in California, are forced on any given day to have to cross state lines to go find surplus blood to bring it into California to keep our own families alive. So your local blood drive is going to help, along with others, to help get us out of that ditch. Every two seconds, somebody in America needs blood, and the Red Cross has to collect 14,000 donations every day for patients in need. And that, in Southern California alone, for the Red Cross just alone, there were over 40 blood drives that occur just in the local area. 80% of donations are collected at blood drives close to where people work and live, and here in SoCal, it's all about convenience for us because we hate getting on the freeway to drive. And chances are, you'll know somebody who will need blood. So here, the convenience part will be great for local residents in Grand Terrace who otherwise might not be able to get to a blood drive. And the blood drive sponsors like Grand Terrace are crucial in the link of saving all of these folks that are sick and injured, that need the help in the hospitals. A lot of people don't think you know people that need blood or have needed it in the past, but I will challenge every one of you, because every one of us has known a mom who's given birth, a cancer patient, somebody who's been wheeled into the emergency room for trauma because we see accidents on the freeway every day, general surgeries and so forth. This is a personal story. Gavin Fisher was only five months old, and his family received news that he had been diagnosed with neuroblastoma, and it's a really invasive cancer found in infants and young children, and as a result of his chemo, he wasn't able to carry oxygen throughout his body, and he needed blood in platelets, and Gavin required over 10 pints of blood. To put it in perspective, a single trauma patient can use in excess over 100 pints of blood, and the highest I've heard to date was 187 pints. So that'll be your blood drive and many others, just to keep one person alive. And if you ask that person, who's still with us, by the way, today, or his family, if those 187 donations were worth it, what do you think that they would say? Yes, of course. And then this is the multiplier effect. For each one of us who don't think we can make a difference, we in fact can. So when one person starts to talk to others about donating, and we bring a buddy and a pal to come and donate for the first time, we actually are making that type of effect on the local blood supply. Here in Grand Terrace, you look like the U.N. as far as your residents are concerned, correct? So diversity is extremely important. People of every ethnic background need to understand why they need to donate blood. Blood types are there, the eight majors, but we all have antigens, and there are over 600 varieties of those, and many are ethnic-specific. So when we are not donating, we are impacting our own families. And I'm not going to go into the rest of this presentation because it's more about the sponsorship, but again, I want to thank you for hosting this drive. I encourage all of you to donate and to get everybody you know to sign up. The city manager's office will be sending out information in detail about the blood drive itself, and I'll open this up for questions if anybody has one.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
Does council have questions at this time? No questions?
Thank you.
We'll look for your information, and thank you again for being here tonight.
Great, thank you so much.
Our next special presentation is by HDL Corin and Coen, City of Grand Terrace Property Tax Presentation. Paula Coen, President.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem. HDL Corin and Coen is the city's property tax consulting services. The city manager had invited the President, Ms. Paula Coen, to give City Council and our residents an overview of Grand Terrace's property taxes.
Good evening.
How are you tonight?
I am well, and I want to thank you for inviting me to make the presentation and the review that I prepared and delivered to your city staff probably about three months ago now. Just a little bit of background while my slide presentation is coming up. We do work for over 210 cities and special districts in California. We're totally California-based. Our office is in Diamond Bar, so I'm down the freeway from you. We do work in 45 of the 58 counties. There are some counties that don't have cities, so they have really no need for my services. And because I don't know your backgrounds and whether or not you have any basic information about property tax, I'm going to spend about 10 minutes talking about the process and about property taxes in general, and then I'll get into the trends and what we're seeing with regards to, hello, my presentation's not coming up, with regards to what we're seeing for 1718 and 1819, your next fiscal year. I do have my presentation on my laptop if we get to that point.
Mayor, it seems like we had a technical difficulty, so Miss Fortune has to go get the backup for that. May we, do we have another presentation that we can, we can go to, or?
Nope.
Okay.
I can, I can start without the slides and go through the slides. I think I want to talk a little bit about Prop 13, because you became a city the election after Prop 13, and Prop 13 is going to be 40 years old this coming June. It did a couple of things, a lot of things, to be honest, with regards to property taxes. And I bought my home in 1977, so I got in just under the bubble in terms of Prop 13. And what Prop 13 did is that it limited the property taxes to 1% of the value. And before Prop 13 was adopted, cities, special districts, counties levied a mill rate. If they needed to raise $6 million, they divided that $6 million by the value in their city or their special districts, and they came up with the fraction, and that's what they taxed everything to be able to generate that revenue, and they would spend that revenue. Well, senior citizens in the mid-1970s knew, a lot of times their property taxes ended up being 10 to 15% of the value of their home, and they were in jeopardy of potentially losing their property. And so Howard Jarvis and his crew put Prop 13 out there, and it was adopted by the two-thirds required. And so what it did, as I mentioned, is it limited the value that could be taxed to 1% and it rolled the values back to 1976. So it went back three years, established those values, and then they could not grow by more than 2% a year, and that's what Prop 13 has attempted to do, to keep the values low. All parcels are taxed at 1% maximum, whether it's residential, commercial, or industrial. A lot of people sometimes ask me, you know, "Tell me what the tax rate is on commercial property." It's the same on all property, 1% of the value. The only exceptions to that 2% growth between tax years are properties that sell. You want a piece of property sells, there's a new market value established, and that's the new taxable value, or for new construction that's added between tax years. If you've got a home and you add a bedroom, that new construction is added to your home price for your value. Prop 13 limited the adoption of special taxes by local governments to require a two-thirds vote on a special tax, we're getting close, and a majority vote on a general tax. And for the state of California to increase taxes, we required a two-thirds vote of those that were voting. The final thing that it did was before Prop 13 was adopted, local governments controlled their taxes. Sort of a little unknown thing about Prop 13 is that it put the control of property taxes in the hands of the state of California. And that didn't seem to be a big problem until the state couldn't balance its budget in 1992, and they came to the cities and started shifting monies to the schools so the state didn't have to backfill with average daily attendance money. They could keep part of that money balanced their budget, and they took money from the cities, counties, and special districts to make this particular swap. And they had the ability to do that. And that was sort of a little unknown fact that was buried in Prop 13 and didn't matter until it mattered, and then it mattered a whole lot to cities because cities lost about 25% of their revenue because of these flops and switches that the state of California made. An interesting fact on the bottom of this slide was in the past 39 years, in 10 of those years, the CPI that was allowed was less than 2%. So the CPI is 2% or what the actual CPI is, whichever is less. There are three property tax rolls that generate revenue, the secured, the unsecured, and the utility. And just want to talk about the kinds of values that are in each of these. The secured role are properties such as land, buildings, and the items that are underneath the land, mines, mineral rights, water, gas, oil. The thing about a secured role piece of property is if the owner doesn't pay their property taxes, in July, the property taxes become delinquent, and five years from that point, if they still haven't paid their property taxes, the state of California will sell that property to satisfy the tax lien. So they are secured by a lien. Unsecured properties, which include things like business equipment and supplies, boats and planes, which often can move around, this equipment is not secured by a lien. It is self-reported, and if the individual or the company doesn't report it and the county doesn't know about it, it escapes. So it's, it's a kind of, it's a more nebulous kind of property. It is also taxed. And the utility role includes things like your electric lines, your gas, your railroads, your cell towers, your solar panels, and those properties are taxed, and the revenue comes back to local agencies based on formulas. I go back to 1985, too complicated to go into here, but these are the general types of properties that generate revenue. To talk a little bit about boats and planes, if the boat is on a driveway in the City of Grand Terrace, you receive the revenue for that boat. If it's in Newport Harbor, Newport Beach receives the revenue for that boat. There are three departments that are responsible for managing the property taxes, and I will tell you that they do not have computers that link with each other, swear to this.
Yes.
They do not have computers that link, so they're all kind of separate entities. The assessor's job is to appraise property, they enroll new construction, they add the market value of properties that have sold, and they administer property tax appeals. The auditor controller's job is to apply the taxes to the roll, to put the direct assessments, any kind of debt service, and once the tax bills are paid, their job is to get the money back to you. And the treasurer tax collector's job is to print and mail the tax bills and to collect the money. So all three of those are separate, as I mentioned. And one other basic report that I want to talk about is the timing. I'm going to focus on the revenue you're currently receiving, which is the 1718 fiscal year. In order for something to be on that roll, it happened in calendar year 2016. January 1, 2017 was the lien date for the roll that you're currently receiving your revenue on. Between January and June, the assessor still has that roll, they're adding corrections to it, they're putting any new sales that they've got, they're working with the Prop Eights that were granted back between 2008 and '12 and now are being restored. And once that roll is completed at the end of June, it is transmitted to the auditor's office. The auditor, as I mentioned, extends the taxes. At the end of August, they send that to the tax collector treasurer. So we're now in August 2017. You have not received penny one yet on this year. And once those tax bills are mailed, they go to the property owners, the taxes are due in November and February, they become delinquent in December and April, then once the tax bills are paid and the tax collector receives them, he then can tell the auditor controller to start giving you your money. By the time we get to your last payment in August 2018, we are going to be 19 months, 20 months, down the road from the values that were driving this train that you're getting the revenue on this year. The reason I mention that is because often councils will say, "I see it being built down the street, when am I going to see it on the roll?" If something is built today and you see it, it didn't happen before January 1, 2018, you will not see that revenue until 2019, '20. So that's the lag we're looking at in property taxes, lags 12 to 18 months getting on the roll. So don't get all excited about new stuff that you're saying now you're not going to see it permanently on your roll for a couple of years. Okay? This report looks at a 20-year history of the value in Grand Terrace, and it's, can this work? Awesome. Grand Terrace hit its peak in terms of value, and I know this is hard for you folks in the audience to see, I'll call out some of the numbers for you so you can kind of follow along with this. That green line in the middle of the page shows the values before the recession hit. And back then, the total value in the City of Grand Terrace was around $850 million. For the three years after that, 2009, '10 through 2011, '12, each year, the values declined. They declined because homes were not selling, homes were not being built, and the assessor of San Bernardino County was, as he is charged to do, reducing values to put them in line with the market value per Prop Eight. And I'm going to go through Prop Eight in just a few minutes, but that's, that's the reasoning for this three-year decline. We then started coming out of that decline for the next four years, and it wasn't until 2015, '16, the line that's in yellow there, that the value finally crossed 850 million. So it took us seven years to come back from this recession and exceed the value on the ground at the time. Today's value is 13.89% higher than it was at the peak of the bubble back in 2008, '09. So it's taken a while to come back. The last recession that we, the big recession we had before this great recession was 1995, '06, when bases were closing in California and we had aerospace leaving the state, people lost their jobs, people lost their homes. It took 10 years to come back from that one. We're still not quite there yet in terms of all the homes being restored, but we're right now about seven or eight years down the road. Oh, animation. To look a little bit at the values and determine why and where we saw the growth in the current year, the value in 2016, '17, a little more than $912 million, almost $912.5 million. When we got the 1718 roll that had grown to 968,142,164, it was an increase of 55,642,000 and change. There were three major things that drove your growth this year. First was the 2% CPI that we talked about, that the assessor applies for Prop 13, that added about 1.5% of your 6%. On top of that, we had homes that were selling for more than the value here, and that added another 2.25%. And then finally, there are other changes like assessment appeals that were restored, exemptions that are coming in and going out, and new improvements to residential properties for the most part. So those three main events added about 85% of your growth this year. That is consistent. We will see that every year. Typically, the 2% is going to be 2% for 1819, so you're going to see that. As we get into this a little farther, we're seeing growth of about 3% due to your properties that are selling, which is pretty average, and we'll have other items that will add to your bottom line. I did mention that, the growth, and we'll talk about your city, which is all in an RDA, all in, the growth that, that's related to that $55 million, added about half a million dollars of tax increment to your redevelopment agency this year. One item that I'm, we show, and it's trends, and cities kind of like to see this, again, sorry for the smallness of this, for the folks in the audience. This looks at when the City of Grand Terrace hit its peak median sale price. I'm focusing on detached homes because they tend to go for a little bit more than any condos in the city. Your median, your high-point median price was back in 2006, when the homes were selling on average for $383,000. After 2006, we had a decline, and we get to the year 2012, when the median price was We had seen about 48.9, so let's say 49% of the values had been eroded by the recession. If someone purchased a home back in 2006 and held on to it, that home had lost almost half its value. For taxation, a good thing because the assessor would have reduced the value. However, for the mortgage payment, they were still paying on that high-priced home. As we've come through 2015, '16, '16, '17, and 1718, the current median price is just 13,000 below what it was in the peak of the bubble, and all likelihood, in the next year or so, you will cross that point. Probably one of the first cities to do that. In this county, right now, only the City of Chino Hills has surpassed their bubble price. You're very close, within $13,000. The average price, again, if we add them all up and divide by the number of sales, is about $17,780 off its peak. Your tax dollars share, and I'll spend just a few minutes on this, everybody, not everybody, but often, when someone pays their property taxes, they seem to think that you get the whole buck. And you sort of do in the RDA, but in general terms, if we look at the way the tax dollars break down, the City of Grand Terrace gets about 19.9 cents of every tax dollar collected. The schools, the county, the library, the fire, the flood control, other agencies get the other pennies that are out there. Your share was established because what the county did is it looked at the revenue that, this is after Prop 13 was adopted, it looked at the revenue you received in each tax rate area that is assigned to the city in the three years prior to Prop 13, and you got that share. So if, for instance, Colton Unified was receiving 40% of all the revenue, they got a 40-cent share of this tax dollar. share of this tax dollar. Pretty simple math problem that was done. And back when Prop 13 was adopted, you were getting about a quarter. But then, those tax shifts that I mentioned that the state took away from you in 1992, '03, and '04 has reduced your share down to 19.9 cents, and the rest of that is now going to schools. How do you... How can this be changed? Another question, we want more. We don't have enough. How can we get more money? In order for you to get a larger share, you have to give somebody to give up some of theirs. Schools are forbidden by law from giving up any. County's going to tell you to go pound sand. Library says, "We don't get enough." So pretty much, you're stuck with what you've got. And while that's fine for you when you want to see what other cities in the county are getting, San Bernardino gets nothing because the Fire District gets all of their money. Adelanto gets 1.7 cents of the tax dollar. So the fact that you're getting almost 20 cents, you're high on this hierarchy of shares. Countywide, the average is 15.94 cents. So you're within the top 10 here, and anybody below Apple Valley, Apple Valley, Chino Hills, Adelanto, all of those cities were incorporated late. They had to negotiate their share, and they negotiated not as well as you did 40 years One view of your values and revenues, your city has 3,876 parcels. Of those, 84% of them are in residential use. You're a bedroom community for the most part. The value of your total $900 million, $816 million of that is in residential use. Commercial and industrial properties, the ones that are highlighted in green, make up about 11%, and you have 188 vacant properties totaling $15.1 million. All of the properties are within the former RDA. The general fund, the very bottom, because you only receive revenue on your base year, you get a whopping $275,274.50 for your general fund. Your successor agency, the revenue that is sent to the redevelopment property tax trust fund at the county of San Bernardino, slightly more than $9.7 million. I mentioned Proposition 8. After Prop 13 was adopted, and we all recognized that every year, our properties could go up 2%, someone in a room somewhere held their hand up and says, "So if my property burns down..." And everybody nodded and said, "Yeah, it's going to go up 2%." And I go, "Well, that can't be right." So in the same election that you became a city, the first Proposition 8 was adopted. And what it mandated was if there was a calamity, flood, earthquake, fire, or if the market values due to economic reasons of properties went down, the assessor had to revalue properties. And in this model, the blue line in the middle of the page is where a piece of property would be if they only got the CPI adjustment per Prop 13. But in this case, I buy my house seven years ago, and I pay half a million dollars for that house, and the next year, the value goes up to $510,000, right here, and I'm thinking, "Man, I've done such a great thing. My property has grown by this huge amount of money, and I'm still being taxed on the $500,000. Good for me." And then the next year, the recession hits, and that property goes down to $450,000. What the county assessor has done is he's required by law to value the property at what the real value is. So rather than being taxed on this line, the homes are taxed lower for the period of time that they are below the market value. And then, once, seven years down the road, the values actually, based on the sale prices of the neighborhood, exceed that blue line, they're put back on the blue line for taxation. This is what Prop 8 does. It protects the property owner. It hurts cities because you aren't receiving the revenue that you were receiving in the past. In your case, your banner year was in 2010, when about 19% of the homes in town had been reduced by the assessor. We had about $79 million taken off the roll. For the city of Grand Terrace back in 2010, that was about 10% of your value had been bled from the roll because the assessor was required to go in and review these properties. In 2016, as we come forward in time, that 19% had been whittled down to 8.7. All but about 13 of the homes were somewhat restored last year. In the past four years, 300 of these homes have been restored fully, so they're above that blue line now, and they're now being taxed. And we still have about $22 million of properties that are undervalued. 256 homes are still undervalued. The values being restored now are less than 1%, will add less than 1% to your bottom line. They're not like they were a couple of years ago when we were seeing 2 and 3% being added when the values are being restored. Top 10 taxpayers in the city of Grand Terrace is listed on this report. Your top 10 taxpayers own 14.42% of the city by value. Average in most cities is around 11, a little less than 1%. So you're a little high, but you've got a lot of big players in town. Of your top 10, you've got two that have got appeals pending, number one and number six. And appeals take a couple of years to be heard. They may end up in a reduction, they may not, now that we're in a recovering economy. This is in your report. I'm not going to spend a lot of time, and I just want to comment that a lot of city councils have asked us about the numbers of properties that haven't sold since Prop 13 was adopted 40 years ago. Some sense that all these properties get put in trusts, and they're never going to sell. They're going to go from parents to kids or parents to grandkids. My kids don't want my home. They're going to sell it as soon as I plant it, I'm sure. But going back 19 years ago, about 36% of your homes had not sold. Coming forward to today, we're now down to 14.6% of those homes. However, when they do sell in Grand Terrace, they're selling for more than three times the value that the assessor has on the roll. So that's bringing a nice bump back to your bottom line when they're selling. Whether or not in the next 20 years, they'll all be gone, possibly. I wouldn't stake my hat on it, but I think that we're going to see more and more of these properties. And these are residential, and for the most part, I'm using detached because my sense is that the condo boom really happened after Prop 13 was adopted, the big condo projects that we saw. Too small to look at, I've already mentioned that your general fund revenue is a little more than $275,200, and your gross tax increment for your successor agency, $9,570. In addition to your general fund revenue, you also... Go back. You also receive revenue as VLF and LOU, $1,113,921. That was part of the 2004, '05 Budget Act that Governor Schwarzenegger implemented, took what used to be population-based VLF and LOU, and gave it to you as property taxes and allowed it grow by your property tax growth. And in years when you see 6% property tax growth, I doubt that you're seeing 6% population growth. So this has been a good thing, and it's, I think, benefited cities in a way that the legislature probably didn't think it was going to benefit cities. Last items I want to talk about are forecasting revenue. Will there be another correction? I attended a meeting last week that Chris Thornburg spoke at, and he's saying, "No, no, no, it's not going to happen." So I'm going to tell you, uh-uh, not on the horizon. The good thing about what we do in property taxes, as you know, it's a delayed indicator. So if we start seeing a recession happen in 2018 calendar year, we'll know before we do the 1920 revenue projection, it's coming. We'll help you back away from the cliff. How far, how deep, we're probably not going to know, but we're going to know it's on the horizon, and we're going to try to keep you in check from budgeting 5 and 6% growth when maybe a 2 or 3% growth is more realistic. So when we're budgeting property taxes for 1819, we know there'll be a 2% CPI. So let's put 2% in your pot to start with. We can quantify the transfers of ownership. I'll show you in a minute, but for you, that's about 3.7%. We're now at 5.7. We don't know how much of the Prop eights are going to be restored, but let's have a percentage point, just to be good. I'm now at about 6.1. What I can't help you with, but your city can help you with, is completed new construction. Anything that you issued a certificate of occupancy for in calendar year 2017, we can add that to the bottom line, too. And in our budget forecasting tools, there are places to do that. And successful appeals aren't probably going to be as critical as they've been in the past, but they may take money away from you mid-year. So, small again. On the right is the successor agency, and we're showing 7.2% growth in your successor agency, wherever my red light is. I don't want to kill anybody with the red light here. That's on the right. On the left is your general fund, and because all of your general fund is in the former RDA, that revenue does not increase. You're stuck with that $275,000. Your VLF, however, will increase by the growth in the overall city. We're showing that to increase by 6.1%. So this is our projection for you for next year, for your general fund, your successor agency, and your VLF and LOU, and that's it. And I did it in under half an hour. I do talk fast. I apologize for that. I'll answer any questions that you have. I know it's a lot to digest.
Thank you for your informative presentation. Does council have questions? Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you for the presentation, Paula. I just wanted you to repeat, if you will, for the viewing audience, those here present tonight, and for the committee at large, the taxable, total taxable value for Grand Terrace is $900...
For Grand Terrace...
Right.
Including the redevelopment?
Yes.
Your redevelopment agency gets roughly $9.57 million. Again, that is plugged into the redevelopment property tax trust fund at the county of San Bernardino. First call on that money, pass-through agreements that you've already agreed to for redevelopment, any special agreements you have, any debt service that you have. If there is money left over after those obligations are met, it then flows back to the original taxing agencies. Some of your taxing agencies already receive 100%. And part of your deals, they took the store when you... In order to let you have redevelopment, so you were required to keep them whole with the redevelopment money. Because of that, the city of Grand Terrace receives more than its 19 cents on that tax dollar I showed you. You receive more than that because others are not receiving any, and they have to distribute all the money back. So you're actually receiving more than your 1% factor. In the current year...
What I wanted the citizens to gain an appreciation of is the $275,000.
The $275,000 is all you receive in general fund money. Yeah.
For... From an approximate taxable value of?
$900 million.
$900 million. That's the point that I want people to appreciate.
Because you have redevelopment. What happens when redevelopment is formed is the value that's on the ground at the time the redevelopment agency is stuck in time...
Yes.
Only generating that revenue for the life of the project. And the redevelopment agency gets all of the growth on that value, and they use it for, in the old days, for doing more redevelopment activities. After redevelopment was dissolved, that plum fell from the tree, rotted on the ground, and now you're stuck with a different redevelopment schedule.
Right.
And you get much less money. However, you didn't get this residual revenue. The... And you know, when Jerry Brown is no longer governor, there may be a revitalization of redevelopment 102 or 201 or something, but I don't know that it's going to have the same dynamic that this redevelopment project used to have.
Well, I appreciate that. I think the two pertinent points for me in particular, and hopefully for the community, is that the city receives a very small share of that 1%.
You do. You do. However, I will comment that the residual revenue that's coming back to you in 2017, '18 is a little less than $885,000. So the fact that you do get some of this waterfall money through after all the obligations are met is bringing a little bit back to you that you didn't used to get when the old redevelopment was in place.
Correct. And Assistant City Manager Fortune and Mr. Duffy have taken us through that process, and we have gained a renewed appreciation for what we anticipate receiving from the property tax fund. When you talk about almost $1 billion in property tax value, people get the impression that that's a significant amount of money that comes to the city, when in fact, it's only $275,000 of approximately $1 billion in taxable value.
Right. And most of my community's property tax is number one or two in revenue. Not that case here.
Thank you.
You're so welcome.
Other questions? Mayor Protan?
I had one other one, and it has... See if I can keep two going before I get cut off. So one of them had to do with the framing with the, what I know is the Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund. So to me, it was more of a little bit of a different understanding that the governor said, "Okay, with Prop 13, you know, you're not going to be able to afford schools. Let the state take the responsibility, and whatever was in there that was going to come to me, I'm going to, based on a formula, let you have it."
Correct.
So when there was that shift, and my way of thinking, it was more that the state was taking what it was entitled to after Prop 13.
And that's one way of looking at it, from the state's point of view. The state had a surplus at that time, and they used that money to bail out cities. So they saw the ERAF as being a way of capturing money that was never supposed to be permanent in their mind, anyway. It was a temporary fix, so be it.
And then, so the other thing that I see in this is, this is the first time I've seen it clearly, but I know the principles of it. The RDA, because we have debt service that we're paying that is significant on bonds we cannot spend.
Right.
So if we didn't have these bonds, and we weren't paying a debt service, then our property tax that comes to the general fund would increase.
Your revenue would increase. Your share would stay the same. Correct. Your revenue would increase, and if there are no obligations for a redevelopment agency, it has to dissolve anyway. So that would happen right away. As long as you've got obligations and so you pay them off, you are stuck with having this scheme that's in play right now.
Yeah. And then, what comes to mind, because I'm on the Revenue and Taxation League of Cities, is it gets kind of, you know, depending on who... Which partner you want to dance with on this thing, is that the governor is trying to... If we don't have any more obligations and we have bonds we can't spend, okay, the thinking is that he also wants his share of that tax revenue.
Well, the state does not have property taxes.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But why does he want, then... Let me reframe this. Why does he want to freeze our ability to use these bonds if he's not going to get any money out of it?
Well, not all cities have an agreement with school districts that keep them whole. Okay? So because the schools are not kept whole in many of these redevelopment agencies, the state is having to backfill with average daily attendance funds if they're not a basic aid school system. So the state is losing money in that respect. So if the redevelopment didn't exist, the schools would get more revenue, just like the city would get more revenue. The state would not have to pay as much ADA, so it would kind of flow up to them.
Oh, great. Thank you. Answered the burning question for me was on that. What was the motivation on his part? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Councilmember Wilson.
It appears as if by some simple math, if I looked at page 10, that... Thank you for the very complete presentation. That approximately 51 cents out of every dollar goes to some kind of a school situation. So to me, wah, 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 the schools get plenty of money. But I'm curious, what law, I mean, you know, the way I understood the presentation, there are things fixed by percentage in law. If the regular person wanted to look at those laws and determine who the culprit is for moving money around and their percentages, where would they go?
The Rev and Tax Code is what set up AB 8.
That's what I thought. The tax code that has a million pages to it.
Yeah. It's Section 97, 98, if you want to go and put yourself to sleep reading.
Is there a tax board or something that does this? In other words, is there a, like a governor and...
No. The auditors in each county are responsible for the calculations. They are audited by the State Department of Finance and the State Controller's Office. So they're on a rotating schedule, and they have been audited going all the way back. So they are... They aren't given free rein. But there's also a Property Tax Managers Association of the State Controller's Office, and all 58 county auditors get together, and if a new law is adopted, and a lot of times, legislature legislative representatives adopt a law... adopt a law but don't really understand how the mechanics are going to work, then the auditor controllers have to figure out how the mechanics implement what the law does. And that's what, what they meet together and get together on the board.
Thank you. Understood.
Councilmember Hesse, did you have a question?
No, I just thank you for bringing this to light.
Oh, you're welcome.
Residency, how much we get for our tax. Like I always said, I go, here's a loaf of bread. We don't even get a slice, and we get the crumbs, and we do a lot for the crumbs.
Yeah. I don't care who you are. If you're LA and getting 26 cents, it's never a month, never enough. And if it's somebody getting, you know, five cents, it's never enough. It's just never enough property tax.
When you keep getting the high cost of everything to maintain the city, and people don't realize it, and we're trying to, you know, keep this city and keep it beautiful and keep it nice and, and safe. My only concern is if I go to the blood bank and I donate my blood, will Governor Brown get any of that, too? I mean, I'm just wondering.
Yes, yes, right.
I want to make sure you're getting 100% of it, so, all right. Thank you.
Thank you again for your presentation. All right, that will finish our special presentations. We'll move on to our consent calendar. The consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. I would like to remove item seven. Are there any requests for any other items to be removed?
I'd like to remove item number four, the monthly financial report.
All right. Any others? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the remainder?
Madam Mayor, motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar with the exception of the items that were pulled.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Wilson, second by Councilmember Hesse, for all items except items four and seven. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes. Mayor Protam Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNebo voting yes.
Okay, thank you. Item number four, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item actually is quite timely, given the presentation that we just heard. And I wanted to ask a question of Mr. Duffy or Ms. Fortune, whichever is most appropriate, regarding our sales tax revenues in the monthly financial report. The council will recall, when I attended the league, new mayor, new council session, there was a presentation about municipal health and the two key indices for evaluating that. And the two key indices were property tax and sales tax. We just heard a presentation on our property tax and where that's headed. We all know that we lost our number-one sales tax producer. And so what, the question I have for Mr. Duffy and Ms. Fortune is, prior to the loss of our number-one sales tax producer, was, in which direction was our sales tax revenue trending?
Go ahead.
Councilmember Henderson, prior to that loss, we were projecting that our sales tax was increasing. Our sales tax revenues are also provided by HDL Consulting, and they also provide us with five-year projections. If city council would like to take a look at that, I can forward that to you.
I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing your first statement in terms of where it was trending?
Going up, sir.
Going up.
Increasing, correct.
And, and this, this upward trend has been evident for how long? Would you estimate?
Not, not including, again, the loss from OneSource. I would say at least, sir, since I have been here, so that's over five years.
Okay, okay. That's good to know. I mean, it's, it's clear that the, that the council appreciates the loss of OneSource. It's important that the community appreciate the loss of OneSource. And when you combine sales tax revenues, where they're headed, if they're flat or rising, with the presentation we just heard on property tax revenue, I think it gives a fairly complete picture of the challenges facing the city council and the community at large with respect to meeting our goals and our plans going forward. So thank you for that.
While we have this one open, on packet page 59, under revenues, we have use of money in property. What does that indicate?
Mayor, are you referring to the previously approved budget and the year-end projection? The use of money in property is any interest investments we receive, or rental or lease. The original amount included the lease that we were originally going to get from Family Service Association. But that has been since renegotiated, which council approved in November.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So this item is a receive and file. Item number seven, my question is on pa, packet page 150.
Madam Mayor, did you want to entertain a motion on that one, or do them both together?
I'll do them both together.
Could you repeat the page again, Mayor?
150.
Thank you.
At the bottom of the page, and I'll just say, it's nice to have this report. I, I think a lot goes into this, showing all the work that the, that the staff does. On page 40, or packet page 50, we're looking at street sweeping. And you go back to July, and it, this is the number of citations that have been given out on street sweeping days. And it climbs until October of 17, and then it drops dramatically. It increases even further than what it was in November of that year. We drop a little bit in December, and then January, it climbs even higher than it was in November. February, it declines a little bit, but not much. But it doesn't seem to me like we're really reaching our goal here. Unless our goal is revenue generation, then, then perhaps we are. But my, my guess is, at least this is what I thought, was that our goal was to have voluntary compliance so that street sweeping was done more effectively. And except for in October and December, I'm not sure what happened in those months, we seem to, to actually be fighting an uphill battle. We seem to have people that are parking when they shouldn't be even more often. And, and we seem to have a lot of resources spent on following our street sweepers. I'm just wondering what, what the plan is to increase voluntary compliance.
Yes, Mayor. For the, for the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, one of the things that we've been looking at most recently is to look at parking on the right side and left side of the, of the, of the, trying to split, splitting an area in half. One of the things we learned on that is that we would actually increase our costs by 25%. Our next scenario is to look at when the tickets are actually being issued. So right now, we start, I think, from 6:00 in the morning till a certain period of time. So if we look at when the tickets are being issued, if we start later in the day, you know, for example, if we start at 9:00, sweeping and issuing tickets, maybe the people that are, that have no place to park, if that's one of the scenarios, they would be gone, they would be gone to work. The other thing is, we're going to be looking at our, our sign distribution, better signs and more signs, because we seem to be getting that as one of the particular issues. So we, so we are aware, and as you indicated, our goal is for compliance. It is not to generate revenue from the citizens on a weekly basis on issuing street sweeping tickets. The best way we can get compliance is, is more notice, trying to tweak and modify, modifying the hours, but we are examining that.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only question. And so we have items four and seven, and I'll entertain a motion to receive and file.
Move approval, Mayor.
Motion by Ken Henderson, second by Councilmember Hesse. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes. Mayor Protam Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNebo voting yes.
Thank you. Open public comment at this time? Are there any requests to speak? This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items not appearing on the regular agenda. And because of restrictions contained in California law, the council may not discuss or act on any items not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. We may also request that a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, or that a request for a matter to be agendized at a future meeting. So at this time, thank you. We have Don Larkin from the Veterans Wall of Freedom.
Don Larkin, Chair of Veterans Wall of Freedom Organization, Madam Mayor, honorable members of the council. On behalf of the Veterans Wall of Freedom Organization and the Foundation of Grand Terrace, I'd like to take this opportunity to invite you and the public to our Memorial Day Ceremony on Monday, May 28. This year, we'll be starting the ceremony at 10:00 AM, a little earlier than normal, taking consideration the weather and everything, because it tends to get a little bit warm. The Memorial Day often becomes just another holiday, a day to take off, maybe do cookouts, maybe go somewhere. But we should take the time to honor the members of the United States military who have paid the ultimate sacrifice in protecting our nation and our freedoms. So the Memorial Day Ceremony, the Veterans Wall of Freedom, is an excellent opportunity to pay tribute to these brave men and women, and to also remember their families. After Memorial Day Ceremony, veterans and their families will have an opportunity to preserve a plaque on the Veterans Wall of Freedom as a long-lasting honor to the veteran's service and sacrifice. And as a reminder, all veterans of the United States military are eligible for a plaque. And I also like to mention that we are planning to have the time capsules in place at the monument by next Veterans Day. So this Memorial Day will probably be one of the last opportunities that you can bring a small memento of a veteran's service to be included in a time capsule. Now, this item could be something like a unit patch or a medal, but we do understand a lot of people don't like to give up those really honored keepsakes. So as a recommendation, maybe you can just make a copy of a photograph, or even write a letter about the veteran, so we can place it in a time capsule. So once again, the ceremony will be Monday, May 28, at 10:00 AM. And we hope that you can attend to honor all those who gave so much for our country and for our freedom. So thank you very much, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin. I appreciate you being here and your service, and thank you for the invitation.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Sally Maguire.
Good evening, Mayor McNebo, council members. I'm just here to remind you this evening about the State of the City event that's being held on Thursday, April 26. The Chamber of Commerce is hosting this, and I am pretty sure that all of you have RSVP'd already, but I just wanted to give you a reminder that it will be held on Thursday evening. Also, an invitation to all the residents of Grand Terrace. It is open to the public, and we hope to see you all there. And I believe it starts at 6:00 PM. I think it does. I'm sure it does. 6:00 PM. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Maguire. Is there any other requests to speak during this time? All right. Seeing note takers, I'll bring it back to council for, for their communications, and we'll start with Councilmember Ken Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I only have a couple of brief comments. We had a wonderful grand opening for the Grand Terrace Dog Park, and it's just a wonderful addition to our beautiful community. Many people are responsible for it. A lot of people worked hard, very diff, very hard to, to identify funding and to work hard to bring the project into fruition. Mr. Duffy and his staff rightly received many kudos, and I want to echo those comments that were made at the grand opening ceremony. I also want to call out specifically a couple of individuals who fall under the umbrella of staff, but I think deserve public kudos in their regard. The first is Mr. Alan French, our Director of Public Works. And then the maintenance crew, and forgive me for not knowing their last names, but they are Ruben, Art, Rigo. And I have Art twice, so that's wrong. There's another gentleman whose name?
Alex.
Alex, correct. Thank you very much. And I, I just want to mention those gentlemen who are always there when we need them and have done such wonderful work on the dog park and all of the city's public facilities. My second comment, I just wanted to inform the council of a recent conversation I had with representatives from Lewis Group of operating companies. I meet regularly with City Manager Mr. Duffy, and he and I had been discussing where we were on the project and what the milestones we might be looking for in the future. And so as a result of our conversation, we agreed that I would give a call to Lewis Group, and I just want to report to the council the, the basic substance of that conversation, because I want council to understand and appreciate that this was not a renegade effort on my part, but more an effort to inform myself as the most recent council member, and then to bring that information back to the council. So I had anticipated that the specific plan might be approved in the latter part of, of this calendar year, but I was wrong. And while that's a bit disappointing, the reason for, it's not a delay, but the reason for the, the up, the revised approval schedule has to do with the significant environmental work that's necessary for the specific plan. And while Lewis owns 55 acres, the plan incorporates 131 acres, and Lewis is doing the specific planning effort with the cooperation of the other property owners, number one. So there is a project-wide EIR, and then there is a program EIR, both of them being developed by Lewis Consultants. Lots of work has to happen, biological work, surveys. I think the last survey is a boring-out survey that starts June 15 of, of this year. And those have to be done at a certain time. You have to avoid the mating season, and so on, so forth. So those of you who have developed projects, like Mr. Wilson on my right here, are very familiar with that process. But the bottom line is, the Lewis Group anticipates full and complete approval, including environmental report approval, by May 2019. And so to tie it all together, we heard a presentation on property tax revenue, and we had some information on sales tax revenue. So if we're fortunate, and I believe we will, to bring about that project, if construction starts in 2019, and 2020, the freeway opens in 2020, we would not be anticipating that revenue for another 18 months to two years. So something to bear in mind in terms of our budgeting challenges that we must meet between now and then, but I'm confident that my colleagues appreciate that fact as well. I just wanted to inform the council and the community where things appear to stand at present with respect to the gateway specific plan. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. And I thank the American Red Cross for coming out, and please, I'm a blood donor, please donate blood. When we have our blood drive, you know, it's a gift that keeps on giving, and it's needed very badly. It's like when we had a presentation about donating organ parts. So it's, it's something that's needed, especially with everything happening around here, so just please come out that day and donate blood. And Saturday was the community cleanup, and we got tasked with Main Street, so we found a lot of trash down there by the old Gage Park. So I want to thank the volunteers who came out for that, and the people who ran that. And on April 12, I attended the League of City meeting, and our topic was about the Cal-Pur system and its burden of unfunded liability. And I talked to Mr. Duffy, and we're $4 million on unfunded liability for our city, but there's other cities also. I mean, like Riverside, there's $64 million. So it doesn't matter how big the city is, you know, $1 million for us is a lot, or $4 million. And Riverside, $64 million is a lot. So there's things... So there's things, like, well, Riverside, they got a Measure Z passed to help pay for some of their expenses for their first responders, to buy new fire trucks and pay for additional police services, they could focus on the unfunded liability. But, you know, it's throughout the whole state of California, and I'm hoping one day that debt will be gone. So that was just a briefing on that. And also, I attended the Solid Waste Advisory Task Force Meeting last week, and they talked about the medical waste, and then the assembly bills for the plastic straws that are coming on, and the tire recycle program, they want to have more money, so when you turn in tires, so you don't get it. As a matter of fact, we collected two tires when we did our cleanup. And one big thing, Ontario is opening up a carpet recycling plant, and they're able to get three pieces of material to recycling the carpet. And carpet's a big thing that fills our landfills, because, believe it or not, it's not biodegradable. So hopefully, that's a win-win situation on that to take out a lot of our landfills. And one last thing, speaking of solid waste, I know we just opened up the Dog Park, but please, pick up after your dog. You know, it's not the city's responsibility, staff members, to go out there, or other people, just, it's your park, enjoy it. I know you're out there talking and enjoying yourself, but just please pick up after your pet. That's all I have. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
I'd like to thank Councilman Henderson about his words about the Lewis situation. It's never really been my thought that it would be any different than what it is, how it's proceeding, mainly because being involved in developers over the last almost 50 years, it's not magical. They need traffic and circulation through their project to be able to determine, to be able to create a revenue stream. And the idea that the freeway changes drug, and they did, compared to what previous city managers thought would happen, or wished would happen, I guess, is not a surprise. And so, that was one of the reasons why we were so adamant that the states stay on schedule and get their work done, especially as we secured our agreement with Lewis. So can't really fault Lewis for doing that, considering the fact that they're doing all the homework on 100-and-some-odd acres worth of property that, you know, only half of it are they actually going to receive a benefit from. I am happy, though, that they are doing this processing, because it's always been my vision that along that area, along Michigan, and all the way over to the school, there would be a specific plan that addressed that use. Because it's important for us to be able to take the few remainder large parcels that we have and make sure that we have good control, intelligent design, in other words, behind the plow. This appears to be the game plan, and that's the way it's proceeding. But it just so happens that when you look downhill from a development, and we certainly have plenty of hills, down at the bottom, usually there's some kind of an EPA concern. And as we know, the state of California is well-burdened when it comes to environmental programming or, you know, procedures. But right now, given the law, it's a necessary evil. For it to take a year for them to go through processing on an EPA issue is ludicrous. But that's the law that we have to adhere to. And so, everything is proceeding the way it's supposed to, but as is usual, when something is in front of it, and it drags, then everything else drags behind. And so, this 2020 situation becomes kind of a heartache to us in the long run for cash flow or whatever. In my mind, we need not tax ourselves to death. You know, the history of this country had very few taxes that were administered upon the people, and slowly but surely, we've entered the, I guess, the history of the serfdom almost for middle class, because of taxes and fees and permits and so on in California. And we already know that it's caused an awful lot of people lose, leave the state because of this. So I think it is reasonable for us to be very careful, the way that we look at our revenue and the way we spend it, and we've been doing that, but I'm assuming because of this new news, that because the sales tax, as well as the property taxes, have every reason to be slightly diminished, and because we can kind of think that maybe we have to be careful in the way house sales go and so on, that we, as a council, will proceed with very cautious feet. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Protem Sylvia Robles.
I also want to not spend a lot of time, but you say that I also value the staff, and also, I really appreciate how friendly they are to all of us when we go to events. On Thursday, April 12th, I attended two meetings, an Ametran's Subcommittee on Administration and Finance, and I'll report when we act on the board agenda next week. I also attended the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee meeting at 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. Actually, then there was other things that kept me there till 7:00. But one of the major discussions was on how local sales taxes will be allocated, and now it's going to be based on the location rather than the point of sale. And that's going to have a big impact on the cities that competed for Amazon and all these other places, because they did some tax inducements to have Amazon, and now, you know, the tax is going to go by location. So there's a group of city managers meeting on that, from very small to medium to large, and they're working on the impacts of that. Also, there were some measures that made it on the June ballot that this league's supporting, and one's a $4 billion parking water bond. Another one is Prop 69 Protecting Transportation Fund, 72 rainwater capture, and property tax exemption. There's a league-supporting November ballot measure on $4 billion for affordable housing bond. Then there was a discussion, there's a business roundtable that's collecting signatures for November ballot requiring two-thirds of votes at the state legislature on fees and taxes, and there's all these kinds of thresholds that did exist before. I'm not quite sure how it would affect us, but many of the cities were quite angry, and once, some cities were pulling their, any business they were doing with Wells Fargo, that's how angry they are. So it's Albertson's, American Beverage Association, Comcast, Dart Container, Kaiser Permenti, State Farm, and Union Pacific, and Wells Fargo that are pushing this. And I guess staff might look more into this for us. Of course, there's still discussion, and I don't know what this, it just, everything that I read is to repeal the gas tax, is still gaining the signatures, and the league fully expects it to be on the November ballot. There was a discussion on a PowerPoint that I gave on RDA, and most, this is very new, there's really not a lot, there's some discussion about RDA, and none of it's kind of locked how it was before. But the main takeaway for me, and I immediately called the city manager, was unless you go after the tax rate that schools have, you really don't have enough money to finance anything. So schools are on, you know, are being looked at with a jealous eye, so to speak, from cities' parts, because they want some of that so they can go and use the growth from that base for things. Then there was a discussion that tied in on pension reform, and I don't know if you're, some of us in government were quite impressed when John Morlock, who was, I think, the tax collector for Orange at the time, that there was, but he was saying at that time that there was a pool of funds that other cities were investing with, Orange County, and this gentleman by Citron was investing all this money. So all these cities that you would think were not going to be impacted were impacted because they were in the casino, so to speak, with this gentleman. And so, Morlock said, this is gonna, this is gonna end, this is gonna not end well. And it did, and there was a big loss for many entities. So he's in the state legislature now, and he wants to do pension reform, but the state legislature is dominated and controlled by labor. And labor controls, this is the league staff told us, labor is the chief in any of these committees at the state legislature that hear these things. The chief of staff for that, him, cohabitates with the person representing the unions, so that gives you a taste of how this goes. And the league had to go and tell Mr. Morlock, you know, these pension bills are well-intentioned, but they're not going to go anywhere this year, and we can't even come and support you, but maybe, but next year we will. So they said after he had a fit about it, you know, he came to the realization that labor is formidable, and they are not willing to deal with pension reform, and so this is going to be something that you won't see from the Cal cities until next year. And so, what I mentioned to it, it just seems like, well, everybody's coveting the part of the tax base for schools, which schools are in CalSTRS, and they have what they call other public employee benefits, which is healthcare for all their retirees, and we're looking at them and saying, can we take some of your money for cities? So it just seems like all of it is really going to be real interesting next year when this just hits, because for every dollar that cities or counties that participate in CalPurs have to spend on pensions is $1 less to go into public services. So I'll leave it at that. And, oh, I was, could you RSVP for me with this Grand Terrace Chamber? I was away for a week, and I got your invitation yesterday. I was unfortunately in Puerto Vallarta for a week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On April 11th, I participated in the General Policy Committee for the San Bernardino County Transit Authority. And so, we look at fiscal year budget amendments for 1718, and we made some recommendations for increasing and closing funds for the project advance agreement. We also received an update on the FY 1718 work goals and objectives for the Transit Authority staff and their particular projects. We recommended that the board approve an agreement with the California Highway Patrol for daily oversight of the state and locally-funded freeway service patrol. Those are the tow trucks that are out on the freeway to help stranded motorists. We're recommending also the funding of the salary of one-half of a full-time CHP officer for a three-year period, which would enhance the ability for them to patrol and to give better oversight. The agreement also provides the CHP oversight for the construction of the Interstate 10 Express Lane project zone. We also recommended that the board approve a contract between San Bernardino County Transit Authority and the city of Rancho Cucamonga for the funding of traffic signal synchronization. I believe that's also a program that our city takes advantage of. On April 12th, I was taking part of the Metro Valley Study Session, which used to be the major projects study session for the California, or the San Bernardino County Transit Authority. The first thing that we did is we received a major project status report for the period through March 2018. Featured in that was our own Interstate 215 Barton Road interchange. The interesting thing about this particular project is that it is part of a pilot project phase that they are going through. So they started this method of delivery that is a general contractor being involved earlier in the design process. They've called this the Construction Manager General Contractor, or CMGC, and it's one of six statewide who use this delivery method. Part of the reason they're using this is to take some of these major projects that would take a very long time to complete and to cut down and streamline the construction. And so, with our particular project, although we've waited and the project has been slipped, they've actually put it into one of these new delivery methods to help in moving the project along at a faster rate. And my understanding from their general projects engineer is that this project is actually moving forward, actually better than they had planned. We also recommended that the board approve a contract with KKR for Design Bill Legal Services for the Mount Vernon Avenue Viaduct Project, and we also received a status report on Measure I Valley Freeway Interchange Phasing Program. I also want to give my thank yous for the Dog Park opening on April 14th. We had the Dog Park Committee members of the Foundation of Grand Terrace there, and I thank them for all the time and effort that they put into it. But I also want to thank prior councils for their agreeing to create the opportunity for the Dog Park to be at its current location. Past councils actually designated that land to be used for that. My council colleagues also, thank you for allocating park fees and bond funds to develop the park. City of Grand Terrace staff, thank you very much for seeing the project through. And it was very nice to have the San Bernardino County Sheriff McGruff the Crime Dog there, also the San Bernardino County Fire Sparky the Fire Dog, and the Fiesta Village Bogey. Each of the sponsors who donated the benches towards the Maintenance Endowment Fund, that was very generous, and I appreciate that very much. I always appreciate the citizens on patrol for their support with traffic management, the residents of Grand Terrace who came out to celebrate. And a special thank you to the balloon team. They were the ones that did the beautiful decorations, and they did it at no charge. They're a local company, their owners live locally, and they have given their time, talent, and balloons in support of this Dog Park, so I wanted to make sure that they were thanked. I didn't thank them at the day of the celebration, so I want to make sure that they understand they're very much appreciated. And then lastly, on Michigan, I have noticed that there has been grading that has begun on the Habitat Home site, and that is a welcome sight to see. So I will end there, and I will move on to the rest of our agenda. We have no public hearings, we have no unfinished business. However, in new business, it is my understanding that we have an item that has been pulled from the agenda.
Correct, Mayor. That would be item number 10. At this time, the Foundation of Grand Terrace has informed us that they are withdrawing their application for a community benefit fund grant.
Thank you very much. So we'll go with item eight, and that's the purchase of automated license plate reader cameras for certain intersections in the city of Grand Terrace. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. The staff report before council supports the two council goals, ensuring a fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved budget appropriations, and maintaining public safety through the purchase of additional public safety devices to assist our public safety personnel in providing additional protection for our community. For the council's consideration tonight is to approve the purchase and installation of automated license plate readers, to authorize the use of bond proceeds upon approval by the Department of Finance, to authorize the appropriation so we can expand these funds, and to authorize the city manager to execute the purchase order. At this time, Lieutenant Wolf will be going through the ALPR project.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and members of the public. I'm Lieutenant Doug Wolf, and I oversee patrol operations for the city of Grand Terrace. As the Assistant City Manager, Miss Fortune, said, I'll be going over the Grand Terrace ALPR project. First of all, I just want to make sure that everybody understands what are ALPRs, so we'll be getting into that. Also, I'll be talking about who else uses the ALPR system. I'll be going over the current ALPR plan, which started in 2017, and then we'll also go over our proposed ALPR plan. So... So what are ALPRs? Well, they're Automated License Plate Readers. The ones that we're going to be specifically talking about are mounted on the overhead traffic signal stands, and they monitor traffic as they drive through the intersection. They capture the license plates. Once the plate is captured, the software is able to digitize that license plate and actually run it against a list of already-wanted and entered vehicles that are in that system. This plate, this database will, if it does find a vehicle that is on that list, it will immediately send dispatch a notification along with a picture of that vehicle, which then they will broadcast it to the deputies that are working out in the field. These vehicles could be a stolen vehicle, maybe an endangered, missing person that that vehicle's been entered into this learned system, wanted felons, armed felons that are driving through our town. So it's, and the list goes on. There's also mobile ALPR software systems, which are installed on our patrol vehicles. Basically, the patrol car has multiple cameras, and it can read a thousand plates an hour, which goes through the database. And also, it can capture two lanes away from the vehicle. The information captured from either one of these cameras are very helpful in assisting our investigators in also helping to solve crimes. It also helps us capture those folks that are from other counties, other cities, and as far away as New York. Anybody that is in a car that has been entered in this SVS system is, when they go through that intersection, we will be notified. Now, just my personal experiences and examples that I would like to talk about, again, just to give everybody an idea of how ALPRs assist investigators. When I was overseeing our Criminal Intelligence Division, I received a phone call from the New York State Troopers stating that they had just had a substantial burglary where very expensive art was taken. And they had information, and the vehicle information, that this vehicle was headed towards Southern California. I was able to use ALPR systems, and we actually tracked that vehicle as it crossed the United States, going through different ALPR cameras. We knew when it entered into Southern California, and within hours, the subjects were stopped and taken into custody, and all the property was recovered. Also, during working intel, we worked a kidnapping case. It was a domestic violence call where the father fled the area. He was a Hispanic male, so we were concerned he was going to head to Mexico. So, and he took the small child with him. We were able to use the ALPRs, which helped us change focus from Mexico to Bakersfield, because that's where the vehicle ran through an ALPR-controlled intersection. We were able to send our investigators up there, and of course, notify the local agencies up there. And within hours, we had him stopped, in custody, and the child returned to mom. Another one out of Central Patrol, we had up in North San Bernardino, several, or numerous residential burglaries that were occurring. It was ongoing, we weren't getting any leads. And then finally, a witness had a vehicle description and a partial plate. Our investigators were able to use ALPR to narrow down to a specific vehicle, and this vehicle also was seen traveling through one particular ALPR intersection very, very frequently. So we assumed that he probably lived or frequented that area. So we sent our investigators up there, our detectives division, who flooded that area, and subsequently, we found that car parked in a driveway. And during the investigation, he was taken into custody for those burglaries. Another one was out of Central Patrol. There was an assault and elder abuse case where the victim, again, only had a vehicle description and a partial plate, the first three letters of that plate. Our deputies were able to run that from their patrol car and identify that that particular vehicle had, was in the scene of the crime at that time, and was able to identify the registered owner, and through other investigative means, and Six Pack showing them pictures of the guy, they were able to take him into custody as well. Again, all based from the ALPR system. And then Highland, I know we all remember the numerous arsons that were taking place up in North San Bernardino Highland area years ago. ALPR system is what gave them the initial lead that helped them locate the suspect. So where are we at now with ALPRs here in Grand Terrace? Grand Terrace has three designated patrol cars. The city pays for these patrol cars, and two of them are equipped with that mobile ALPR systems. So those vehicles are constantly driving around capturing those plates. In 2017, two ALPR cameras were purchased and installed on eastbound Barton and Honey Hill. And I gave, I handed out to the staff, and I'm sorry I didn't get it in the PowerPoint, I got it after I had already submitted it, but it has a breakdown of the ALPRs from that particular intersection, which it's two cameras, lane one and two, heading eastbound. And as we see there, those dates on the left are by week. So on the average, we're capturing 32,411 plates that travel through that intersection eastbound only, and 1.5 of those cars are on that wanted list every week. So, and I know I've heard our folks work in the field, when dispatch advises a stolen car or a wanted subject, just travel through that intersection. They all go out and do an area check. Oftentimes, our air unit shows up and helps with the area check. Sometimes, they've gone as far as La Malinda and stopped them in La Malinda. But bottom line, a lot of them get arrested. Some of them, it is an area check, and they can't find them, but it has been proven to be very successful. The city of Highland has got an extensive ALPR program, and it is very busy, especially being in that part of the inland empire. San Manuel Casino, they have, they capture every vehicle license plate that travels onto their property, and it has been a terrific investigative tool for us and San Manuel Casino, their investigative unit. City of San Bernardino also has several ALPR camera systems in their city. So our current plan for ALPRs in Grand Terrace, starting 2017, the goal was to install, and again, this is all based on available funds, one to two ALPR cameras per year, and our goal was to capture vehicles traveling through or leaving the city. In 2017, those first two cameras were purchased and installed on eastbound Barton and Honey Hill at a cost of $30,000. Beginning 2018, we discussed the planning and installation of one or two more cameras elsewhere in the city. And again, it was based on financial funds. The problem that we have with this current plan is for investigators to benefit from the ALPR, because it's much more than just capturing stolen cars and wanted people driving through. Investigators use it as a very valuable tool. But for them to be able to use it, there needs to be ALPR cameras at specific key intersections throughout the city. With the intersections that need to be covered, and at the pace that we're going with that one or two cameras a year, depending on funds, it would take eight to 10 years to be able to full, not fully, but at least give us something that is workable for our investigators. And by the time we did eight to 10 years, probably the technology is going to change anyway. So the proposed plan and recommendations. The Sheriff's Department has worked, that's me, working with Vigilant and the engineers to identify the best location for each of these cameras, and the city staff has identified a funding source. So our recommendation is purchasing eight of these ALPR cameras and place them where they're best suited in the city to capture those plates traveling through and leaving our city. This should be considered Phase One, a huge step of getting Grand Terrace involved in the ALPR program. But I would say every two to three years, we need to reevaluate and make adjustments with the system to make sure that we're capturing the best places possible. I'll be showing a map here in a little bit, and as you'll all see, that there are some holes in the city that aren't getting the coverage that we would like. However, to be able to move those cameras to those strategic areas to get those plates, we would need the infrastructure for that. And right now, the infrastructure is not there. So don't think that it wasn't thought about. Here's where the camera locations are. I got a pointer here. The one up here at Honey Hill and Barton is our two current cameras that are in place that capture those 32,000 plates every week. We have six cameras, because there's two lanes apiece here. So they're traveling the three different directions, eastbound, southbound, and northbound at Barton and Mount Vernon, and also down here at Michigan and Main. We have one camera each direction, because there's only one lane each direction there. We would love to catch this area right here, but it is under construction for the next couple of years, so that would probably be our place that we want to revisit when the dust settles there of where we, our best camera placement would be. These are the Grand Terrace City cameras, not to be confused with the ALPR cameras. This is what the city staff purchased quite a while ago and had made several additions, and they have also been proven to be very valuable and a good investigative tool. We've captured several good righteous crimes in progress on those cameras. It's helped us, the hit-and-run that we had involving the juvenile, it was that camera that helped us locate and help us bring that investigation to a conclusion. So again, both of these camera systems working simultaneously really will be very valuable for us. Any questions?
Thank you, Lieutenant Wolf. What questions do council have of staff? Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not a question, but a comment. I want to compliment you and Mayor Protem Robles in particular. Lieutenant Wolf and former Grand Terrace Police Chief, Captain Dorsey is now Deputy Chief Dorsey. If you recall, the ALPR system, the county was in a competitive grant situation, and Grand Terrace was one of the communities used as part of that grant application, and also working with the city in terms of our limited resources to identify a couple of locations that they felt would be good for knowledge development purposes. And so I think today, we're looking at a situation that helps us bear the fruit of that initial experiment that took place back in 2014, 2015. Thank you, Lieutenant Wolf.
You're very welcome.
All right. Any questions of Lieutenant Wolf at this time? All right, see, no questions. We'll open it up for public comment.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeffrey McConnell.
Jeffrey McConnell, 21758 Walnut Avenue. Many of you here have heard me talk about ALPRs over the last four years, when Captain Dorsey first started bringing this up. I've been promoting to try and get a cyber fence around the city of Grand Terrace, and this is a great step towards that. So thank you very much for everybody involved. I also, ALPRs are, helps law enforcement, but what's best about them is they're extremely expensive comparatively speaking. What's also extremely inexpensive is signs. So I would hope that some consideration is taken into, now or in the future, signs coming into, people coming into Grand Terrace will see that we are cyber-protected, and that in itself may deter criminals from doing anything in town or turning around and going in the opposite direction. Signs help out a lot, such as you were talking about, signs for the street sweeping. People have been complaining about not having signs for that. Signs work. So I push for signs, as I've tried to push for signs over my neighborhood for eighteen-wheelers to stop hitting my Mercedes. So paper plates also, that's another issue that Mr. Gallo and I have talked about. People, criminals like to put paper plates on their vehicles because they don't get picked up by ALPRs, so I want to continue to help promote that the deputies check out paper plates and make sure they're not illegal, because people do do that. And I want to remind, Mr. Deputy Spears told me last year was to, that lenses need to be maintained, cleaned at least once, twice a year, I think he said, so that the image is clear and it functions properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. And that was my only request to speak, so I will close public comment, bring it back to council for their communication and consideration of a motion. Councilmember Hussey.
Yeah, just comment here, then. You know, this is a great law enforcement tool. We need to put a safety net around our city, but we also got to remember, this great law enforcement tool, we need somebody that's going to be there to back up this tool. That's what I mean by officers and deputies. So these are one step closer to help officers to apprehend the suspect, but if we don't have the officers here, then it kind of like hinders the thing we're bringing in from other outside sources. But the cameras, you know, I worked at the prison, and the cameras don't lie. You know, they tell you what's going on, and human nature, when you see something, you forget, and the camera will tell you everything. It did help, you know, Lieutenant Wolf said apprehend that lady who did a hit-and-run, it did help on some other stuff come in. You know, people come into our city, as I always say, to go shopping. They go shopping in our houses when we're not home, and this helps, you know, identify them. But I just want to thank Lieutenant Wolf, and thank everybody for this, and I'd like to make a recommendation for approval of this item.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Hussey for staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to item 10, which is Notice of Completion of the Work Completed by, excuse me, item nine, Notice of Completion of Work Completed by Pavement Coatings for the Fiscal Year 2016-17 Capital Improvement Program. May we have a staff report? Mr. Alan French, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, Alan French, Public Works. This item before you is just the notice, filing of the Notice of Completion for Year One of our Capital Improvement Program. The item supports the 2030 Goal Number Two, Maintaining Public Safety by Investing in Our Critical Infrastructure. This was the first of the five-year Capital Improvement Program that was adopted in November of 2016. In April 2017, the council awarded the contract to Pavement Coatings for $624,620 to slurry seal over 80 streets here in the city. During the construction, some additional work was needed due to some of the street conditions, and we were able to negotiate with the contractor to get some more extensive coverage, more extensive treatments. Once completed, the project closeout, we were working on the project closeout, and were made aware of a street that was missed due to a naming issue. A similar street was done instead of the one that was on the program. So we worked out with the contractor again, and they were able to work it into the program, and it just recently got slurry sealed. So here's the slides, just basically showing the council approval, and the program was based on evaluations of the PCIs. Let's see. And I wanted to go- And I wanted to go to the summary, which is this slide here, sorry. So as you can see by the project summary, the bid amount was $624,620. We negotiated a change order, $14,000 to cover some of the extra work, and we were able to move some of the extra work to cover some of the extensive work that was required, and that was an increase of 2.4%. The engineer's estimate was about $800,000. We had soft costs for inspection and materials testing, $15,000 and $25,000, and that brings the total project cost to $679,000 at this time. So the retention is what we keep until after the project's completed, and that will be paid upon the filing of the Notice of Completion. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. French. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hussey and then Wilson. Okay. Councilmember Wilson.
Mr. French, good call on making sure that they fulfill their contract duties. It is interesting to me that the end of projects that they discovered that Franklin Way was slurry sealed instead of Franklin Court, and rightfully so, they were forced into a position to go ahead and do the other one at no cost. So that makes sense, and when they slurry seal the wrong street, it would be better if they did the right one, which is good. It might be not a bad idea to include a map next time in there so that they don't get confused, I guess. Whatever. I see that we had about $40,000 worth of inspection services and so on, out of the $50,000 that we went towards the engineer's estimate. So you only ended up with a two, what is it, $14,000 and change extra for pavements, areas that were a little bit lousier than what we anticipated. That's excellent. That's terrific. In the paving industry, those guys get their extra work order books out the day they start. So congratulations. So I think we did a real goodbye for what we did, and good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilmember Hussey.
Thank you for the report, Mr. French. My only thing is, you know, I know we're slurring and we're refurbishing the streets. My thing is, on the slurry, you know, I know it's not a lasting thing, it's just to give us, you know, a certain percentage till we hit, you know, don't go below 70%, is that right?
Yes, sir. It should be.
You know, and it does beautify the street and, you know, make it, it's nice, but my thing is, utilities companies coming in once again right after we slurry, and I'm seeing patchwork, and it doesn't, you know, it's looking bad again. I mean, we make sure somehow, you know, after a week after we slurry, or two weeks or a month, that, you know, we fix it a little bit better, you with this company to kind of like just patch that thing to kind of blend in the whole street.
Yes, Councilman. So I've seen that, and what we're doing is, we were, for the, the gas company had came in and had some emergency repairs, so when they came in for the permit, I explained to them, you know, we had recently slurry sealed that, and they were going to have to redo that street. So they did that up on Preston, but I noticed on Van Buren, the water district was replacing the line, and we had slurry sealed that street. So they, I haven't got to talk to them at this point, but the intention is to check their patchwork, because they're supposed to be using full-depth pavement to replace that. And when they seal the edges, that should, that should match with our slurry seal project. But you're right, it would still be visible over the top of that slurry street. So one option would be to have them go back and re-slurry after the patchwork.
Yeah, I know, like, this is a cosmetic fix, you know, and it's, just, we spent a lot of money on that cosmetic fix and to have it come right back and look bad after a couple of weeks, and I just, and also want to maintain the integrity of that road.
Yes, sir. I agree, and what, I would, just so you know, that these were, these fixes are emergency, because when they come in to me with a regular permit, typically it's months, if not years, out, and so I check the streets that we've done, and I say, okay, you're good, you'll have to repair the street, as typically done. But when they come in, into our slurry streets, I tell them, yeah, when you come in to do this, you need to re-slurry this section of the street, and that's how I was able to get the gas company to do that.
Yeah, I understand, emergencies and stuff, unfortunately, Murphy's Law, when you do something, and it happens, but, you know, that just was brought up to my attention in the public, and I like to pass it on, so.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Councilmember Henderson.
I'd like to echo Councilmember Hussey's comments. We had an emergency on my cul-de-sac, and the water line was repaired, and the work was, was not satisfactory, and I talked to Mr. Duffy about it, sent him some pictures, and corrective work has been done. It's better than the initial attempt, but already one of the patching areas has been turned up by my neighbors, two large trucks that go up and down the cul-de-sac, so. So just, if there's a way to work more effectively with Riverside Highland on emergencies and on specifications for the work that needs to be done, once we have freshly slurry sealed or ground and did a brand-new street overlay over time. My specific question is Barton Road. I don't know where that is on the CIP, but I'd like to hear from you, when we do get to Barton Road, will that be grind and overlay or something different?
No, sir, Councilman, it would be most likely grind and overlay, because that pavement section is much thicker than these residential streets, and you would have to take down that first inch or two, and most likely, we would be able to apply for some grants to maybe get some rubberized asphalt on that, which adds life to the pavement. But for Barton, we do have enough section there to just do the grind and overlay. The base is pretty good, like you're saying, the ratability of that street is a little rough.
It's poor, and it's getting worse. Now, I understand that probably with the, with the interchange being under construction, that it's not smart to do any improvements in the near term, but it is our main drag, our major thoroughfare, and when Mr. Duffy and staff are out there trying to bring new business to the community and attract new investment, having Barton Road in excellent condition would go a long ways toward, toward helping that effort. I can tell you that when new investors or end-users come to town and they see investments in infrastructure, it encourages them. When they don't see investments in infrastructure, you have a tougher road to hold when you're trying to convince them to locate or expand their business here in Grand Terrace. Thank you.
Also, Councilman Henderson, you will see a significant part of Barton Road get some improvements during, during the 215 and change project, so you'll see some enhancements there happen.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you. We'll open it up to public comment. Are there any requests to speak? All right, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'd like to make the motion on the item.
Moving staff approval, our staff recommendation?
Our staff approval, yeah, direct staff to file the Notice of Complaints, Completion for the Work Completed by the Contractor Pavement Coating for the Fiscal Year 2016-17 Capital Improvement Program, CIP, consisting of slurry seal and paving of 81 streets throughout the Grand, throughout Grand Terrace.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey, and second by Mayor Pro-Tam Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Pro-Tam Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to item 11, which is a consider or request by Foundation of Grand Terrace to have a beer garden at the Community Day of 2018. I, at this time, I am part of the Foundation of Grand Terrace Board, I'm not part of this committee. I've spoken with the city attorney, and I don't have a financial conflict of interest, but if it is something that my colleagues would like me to recuse myself from, I am happy to do so. All right, move forward then. Staff report, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Sandra Molina, and I'm the Planning and Development Services Director, presenting this item. This particular item does support our 2030 mission statement to preserve and protect our community and its exceptional quality of life through thoughtful planning within the constraints of a fiscally responsible government. As indicated by the mayor, the Foundation of Grand Terrace will be having their annual Grand Terrace Community Day event on June 2 of this year at Richard Rollins Park. The event will be from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and event activities will include up to 30 vendors, a kids booth, or kid zone, pet adoption, food vendors, and stage performances in a car show this year. Included within this event, the foundation is also proposing to have a beer garden, which would operate from 10:00 a.m. to 2:45 p.m. Supervision will be provided by foundation members, and they are considering limiting drinks to two per person. The city's municipal code prohibits possession and/or consumption of alcohol on public property. However, Section 9.04, .040 also authorizes the city council to allow alcohol use in conjunction with a special event, and the foundation has requested that the council consider allowing alcohol sales and consumption during the event. Included in the staff report is the written request by the foundation, and also a site plan as far as where the beer garden would be staged, and that's towards the south end of the, of the park. If granted, the foundation would be required with regard to the beer garden to obtain the ABC license, pay for onsite deputies, and also provide insurance identifying the city. Staff request that the council consider the request and take an action to either approve or deny their request as written in the agenda report. With that, I'll conclude my presentation, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Director Molina. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Henderson.
Director Molina, in your tenure here with the city, has the city ever approved sale of alcohol or use of alcohol in one of its public facilities?
I'm not aware of that, of the council approving that in the past.
So if we approve this, this, in your estimation, would be the first time that this has occurred?
In my, in my memory, that the council has approved that, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro-Tam.
Well, we rushed quite through this conflict of interest and no money involved or whatever, but there's going to be revenue that the foundation is proposing to be raised by this, so if you're a board member, then you're directing those revenues that are being obtained by this?
Mayor Pro-Tam, did you want me to recuse myself from this item?
Well, I'm asking, you know, I, no, I'd really like you to vote on it, because you haven't been able to vote on quite a number of things, the Lions Community Center, Riverside Highland, there's always conflicts of interest, so I'd really like you to weigh in on this.
Okay. I would not be directing these funds.
Okay. You're not a board member?
I'm a board member for the foundation, I'm not a board member for their Community Day event.
Okay.
And so they have a community services committee, and those funds would be in that community services.
And the board doesn't approve those funds?
They don't direct them.
They don't direct them, okay.
Councilmember Hussey.
So there's never been alcohol at the park, but I also know that this is our 40th anniversary. When the community has their meetings, was, is it a strong community outreach to have beer at the park? I mean, is this part of the celebration, or is it something new that they want to try?
You know, I think that the foundation has, has considered it, but this is the, the first time that they've actually applied to have the council consider it.
Yeah. Councilmember Hussey, we actually have a representation from the foundation here. If you'd like to ask them what their community outreach was and how they've arrived at this project, can certainly bring them forward.
No, that's okay. Okay. Yes, actually, we did do, and I.
For, for the record?
Oh, Sally McGuire, and I'm the Community Events Coordinator. Sorry, I was choking a minute ago, so I have a cough. We did mention a few months ago, when we talked to Mr. Duffy, about some of the things that the community has spoken about in the past, about what they would like to see at Community Days, and so one of those, I know I mentioned about that, the beer garden, they just want to see different things at, at the Community Day event, rather than just the same thing. Then we also, a couple of months ago, put out a comment on 92313, and some of the things that we got were, yes, one was the beer parade was high on the list. So they, they, they didn't say they didn't like what we were doing, but they did say that they would like to see different things, so that's why we were bringing this up. That's, it is for the residents, that's what we were doing it for, so.
And this will be away from any of the kids programs if it's approved?
It will be, it will not be near the kids zone, and it will be supervised, and I believe, Sandra, that we may or may not have to have security there, whether it be the sheriffs or, well, the sheriffs will be there anyway, they're always at the event, so we will have somebody there.
I just need to make a slight correction on that.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes, Mayor. What would happen is, if you are going to have alcohol served on point, once you get your one-day license, that would be, have to be signed off by the sheriff's department, and they would recommend that you'd have some sort of security, so they would review that, and I would, as a city manager, I would say that that would be a significant part of, if the, if the lieutenant wants to speak to that, but it is extremely important that we take precautions in that particular area.
Yes, absolutely. I spoke with council, and with the amount of people, we're probably looking at about two deputies for a five-hour period.
Okay. We're asking.
And who would pay for the five-hour deputies?
The, the foundation would.
What would that probably cost?
I don't know, we hadn't gotten that far, we had to ask.
About $1,000. Thank you.
Is that it?
Councilmember Henderson?
Just a comment. Here's my issue, I don't, I don't necessarily philosophically oppose what's being proposed, but to my knowledge, we've never done it. When I was sitting in Mr. Duffy's seat three years ago, we had a former council member who proposed selling of alcohol at Rollins Park for some function, I don't recall which, and I met with Captain Dorsey and Director Molina regarding the application, there was a public safety program required, and so on and so forth. I informed the council through my weekly update of the possibility, and, and the, the reaction wasn't, wasn't entirely positive. The applicant eventually withdrew the application because of the requirements and costs associated with the public safety plan. So if we do this, if the city council does this, it certainly has the discretion to not do it in the future, but I think it's, it's difficult to say no to a similar organization or for a similar purpose. I, so I struggle with that, because it's a, it's a slippery slope. The foundation does good work, and we understand that's a benefit to the community, but at the same time, we haven't done it before in the 40-year history probably of this community for reasons that are, I think, are only too obvious in the, in the municipal code. So I don't like giving off the impression that I know you, Sally, and I know some other people, and of course, I know the mayor, who's a member of the foundation, you're all good people, so we can do this, because we may not know the next applicant, but they could be good people as well.
Right.
And we don't, but we don't have that kind of information or background, and so likely as not, we might say no when there would have been justification to say yes. So I struggle with, with, with the conundrum in that regard, because I think there's good on both sides, and there's potentially not so good on both sides. Thank you.
I understand. Can I just make another comment? We're, we're only asking because this came up.
We're only asking because this came up from the residents, and we, there are two things we asked about with the parade, which we did consider, and we talked to the city manager and to Sandra, and we realized that we probably couldn't do that this year, but we will try to do that next year. The beer garden was the other, and so we're just asking for approval. If we can't get it, then obviously we will not do it, so.
Any further questions?
Oh, no, I just have a comment.
Okay.
That it?
All questions are done. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so do we have questions to further, or shall I go to public comment and bring it back for conversation?
Can go to public comment.
Okay. We'll open to public comment. Thank you. Mr. Jeffrey McConnell.
Jeffrey McConnell, 21758 Wallen Avenue. I've been in town since 2000, and I had a little issue with a garage that got me involved in the community. I joined the chamber, and I recall in 2001, the Mr. Garcia brought the Budweiser trailer to Richard Rollins Park, and it's a chamber function, and I was the tap master. So yes, we have done it within our 40 years. I do not recall, due to my CRS, as to what the council said or didn't say back then, but just for matter of record, I do vividly recall that we had beer at Richard Rollins Park, and I believe it was 2001, it was a chamber function. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Any other requests to speak? All right, seeing done, we'll bring it back to council. And I would like to express my opinion on this. When I think about Community Day, I think about the fact that it's a day that is open to all the residents.
This is the point of order, you're supposed to do the council first, and then you go last.
Is that how that goes? I don't think that's how that goes.
Is that Rosenberg's rules, council?
I think I have a right to make a statement.
City attorney? What's our rules?
I think there's, my understanding is that's more of a custom. I don't know of any particular policy that you have that that's the way it would go.
So we're breaking custom, okay.
As I was saying, my understanding of Community Day, it's a time for the community to come together, and it's a time for families to be together. And when I think about having a beer garden as a fundraiser on city property during an event that is meant to be open to the community as a fun time, to me, it doesn't seem like it's a very good fit. And if it's setting a precedent for later actions by the council to approve a license of this sort, I'd like to see it having more of a fit for whatever the event is. And so, of course, I am interested in what my colleagues have to say, but I wanted to make sure that I put that out there. And any other statements at this time?
Please, Mayor.
Councilmember Wilson.
For personal reasons, I would vehemently oppose something that would send the wrong message to the community. We know the deadly circumstances that take place with alcohol inundation and poisoning that really is kind of out of most people's control, and we have a bar, we have a couple of bars in the town, and we have alcohol sales prevalent everywhere. And we've done our best to work with the marijuana situation. In fact, I believe the city of San Bernardino recently got overturned on their item that they passed in the last election. I think it sends the wrong message. This is a Community Days that historically has been, and I think we can look this up and be accurate, that has been a family activity, and at points, we've had all kinds of crazy things like egg tosses and so on. And it's gotten big, and it's gotten small, and depending on the economy, but I still think it's a Family Day, and I think it's a legacy that we leave. And I'm a little particular about the way I leave a legacy, and it's not a bunch of booze-breath people at a Community Day outing, so I'd be opposed to it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I was on the council when the former city council member was interested in, and I was getting a lot of material. So I had an opportunity to weigh in how I felt about it, and how I felt about it is not on my watch. I didn't feel comfortable doing this, and I agree that there are plenty of places to consume alcohol, you don't need to be at a Community Days. And I'm glad to hear that this wasn't something you just brought forward, it was something that, you know, you got some input that people would like to see. And as I mentioned to the city manager, is at that time, you know, I was looking at different cities, and the city of Redlands has Sylvan Park, which is near the university, it's off a major highway, you know, and I felt, and they're also a bigger city with more resources. And I felt, well, maybe, you know, if we were in that situation, but to me, Richard Rollins Park's an awfully intimate park in an awfully intimate neighborhood, and I just don't see it as being compatible. And, you know, I'm glad that all of us can discuss this, because, you know, when I saw this, my hope wasn't that four of us were left to decide this thing with one of our partners. So that's how I feel about it, and I'm done.
Councilmember Hesse.
You know, when I asked about the law enforcement, the thing is, alcohol does strange things to people. I ain't worried about the community center, the Foundation policing people, I'm worried about alcohol coming in that wasn't bought from the Foundation. And like the mayor pretends, it's a residential area, and what's also next to that park is a school, you know. We have guidelines for, even though the school probably won't be in session, it's still close to a public school. So that's my concerns. I mean, we have a beer garden, we have a couple other places that people can go and relax and enjoy, nothing against drinking beer, you know, but as far as at a park, like Councilmember Wilson said, it is a family-oriented thing, and we want to keep the family, I know we're trying, and the Foundation's trying to have other activities for the families, you know, we used to have those parades, I remember my kids in those parades, and of course, the fire department had their pancake thing going on, and I think they even had like a cow dropping contest or something, you know, in the squares, and I think my wife won, and the fire department came to our house, I didn't call 911, but they came to our house, and we got a gift certificate or something. So those little things that people remember, you know, that, I remember the kids having a good time doing that, and, you know, we also do things for the seniors, you know, and the things painting, but I think the beer garden thing, you know, it's a good idea, but I don't think it's a good idea for that location and being a residential thing, and the sheriff's and the extra expense we have to have on that. I know the sheriffs, and they're showing their dog and pony show, but we want to have it a great time. And my, like I said, my main concern is people bringing alcohol in, it's not even supporting the Foundation, because that does happen. That's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Hi.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to deny the request to allow the beer garden at Rollins Park in conjunction with the Community Day.
I second the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wilson, second by Mayor Protem Robles, please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Hesse, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor McNamara voting yes, Councilmember Henderson votes no.
All right, thank you. And so we'll move on to item 12, which is animal control services, budget and related actions, appropriation of funds for program, purchase of vehicle, and contract for animal shelter services with the county of Riverside. May we have a staff report, Director Sandra Molina?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. So this item is to discuss animal control services and related actions for the upcoming fiscal year. Component of this item tonight does include a contract with the county of Riverside, and I wanted to let the council know that the county of Riverside veterinarian, Dr. Alan Drucese is in the audience, as well as the director of animal services, Mr. Robert Miller. And also on the dais, updated contract was also provided to the council. So this item does promote our 2030 vision statement with regard to ensuring our fiscal viability by providing animal control services in-house. Just a bit of background, the council did direct staff to move forward with reorganization of code enforcement. Code enforcement will also include animal control services. And on the 27th of just last month, the city council also approved the position classifications and pay scale for the new code enforcement animal control officer position and code enforcement animal control specialist position. And there are a series of actions that we're asking the council to take. This evening, we're going to ask the council to receive and file the proposed animal control budget to authorize an appropriation of traffic safety fund, traffic safety funds and general fund, and I did want to note that the staff report recommendation was for a split of 25 and 25 from those two funds, but we're asking to modify that, so it's a 20-30 split. And I'll get more into that as well. But this authorization will give us the ability to expend funds for our startup cost. We'll also be asking the council to approve a, or authorize the city manager to execute a purchase order for a new vehicle, and also to approve the agreement for sheltering services. And so, again, the appropriation is for the startup cost, we need to purchase the vehicle for code enforcement and animal control, we need to make modifications to it and brand it, and also provide training and equipment to support the field operations. With regard to training, we are also partnering with our neighbors for either on-the-job training or ride-alongs to give the officers the experience and just to become familiar with the position. These appropriations that we're asking for are for the 1718 fiscal year, and so as I get into the presentation, it won't affect our 1819 budget. Currently, we have budgeted for animal control services $153,000, and based on our budget, we estimated annual savings of $50,000 that will go, can go to other general fund needs. In our budget, we are anticipating that to cover, for staff coverage and on-call hours, that we would need a second part-time position, and that position would be included for the council's consideration in the 1819 budget. This is the chart that was provided in the staff report for our first-year budget and our second-year budget, with the part-time officer replacement and maintenance costs for the code enforcement animal control vehicle. Sheltering, we're budgeting it at 30, even though the contract's proposed at 20. And then we would also have a need for veterinary services, and then training and equipment. And so we anticipate about $102,000, again, that is a cost savings from previous budgets.
So I just wanted to reiterate to the council that Ms. Molina has indicated that there would be a second part-time code animal control officer.
We have one now, and we'd have two.
We have, we have, yes, we have budgeted one full-time person, we have one part-time person, and with this particular budget, with $50,000 savings, you will get an additional second part-time person.
Just thank you for that clarification. With regard to the vehicle, we would purchase a Ford Transit Connect XL cargo van at a cost of $27,000. The vendor is National Auto Fleet Group, and they are contracted with National Auto Fleet, excuse me, I don't have that right, it's with National Joint Powers Alliance. And National Joint Powers Alliance did send out a request for bids, and National Auto Fleet was the successful bidder. And so this vendor and this cooperative purchasing process, which is what we're proposing and is allowed in our municipal code, is the process that we would request that the council authorize the city manager to execute the purchase order. And this cooperative purchasing process has been used by other cities with this vendor, such as the city of Ontario and Costa Mesa, to name just a couple. And this is a picture of the vehicle. So this is Greenwood Village, I have no idea what state this city is in, but they actually use this type of vehicle, they also brand it, put in some lighting, and then this is the animal confinement area that we would have installed. Again, on average, the city has five dogs per month that are impounded, based upon our statistics, and so we feel that this is adequate for the need that we would have. With regard to sheltering services, Riverside County would provide those sheltering services, it'll be out of their shelter in Harupa. We did contact San Bernardino County and Moreno Valley, and they are not, they don't have the capacity for animal sheltering, so they weren't viable options. The city of San Bernardino, who currently we contract with, is seeking sheltering alternatives, so they're not an option for us at this time either. The contract that's before the council is at $20,000. At the end of the year, there'll be a true-up, that $20,000 is based on the statistics that were provided to Riverside County for the last two calendar years. And so depending on the amount of animals that are actually impounded, that cost may go up or down. But in the event that it does go up, that's why we're budgeting $30,000 for next fiscal year. The contract is for an initial two-year period with a one-year extension, and before the council is a updated contract, which is in substantial compliance to what was provided in the staff report, and so we would ask the council to go ahead and approve that contract that was provided to them. Part of the sheltering services is that veterinary services would be provided, so if we take an injured animal to the shelter during daytime hours and that they're open, the vet will see the, will treat the animal as part of the impound process. But we are also going to contract for services in case for after-hours, we are talking to Grand Terrace Animal Emergency Clinic, and then also a local vet for daytime hours. So how we anticipate that working is that if the dog is injured, it would go to the shelter in Riverside, but if it's injured to an extent that we feel it needs more immediate care, then we would take it to one of our contract vets before taking it to the shelter. With regard to the fiscal impact, again, the fiscal impact would be to the traffic safety fund and general fund this fiscal year, but ongoing, we anticipate a fiscal savings of approximately $50,000, and as indicated by the city manager, that does include a second part-time position, and we still would have those savings. And so with that, I conclude my presentation. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to respond. Again, Dr. Drucese and Mr. Miller are present in the audience if there's any questions with regard to the sheltering contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Molina. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hesse.
So we're saving $50,000 annually right now.
That's what we estimate, yes.
Yeah, because since I've been on the council, that cost for animal control's been going up and up and up. I mean, this is a continuous savings, it's probably more next year if we were to maintain our services, correct?
Yes, that's what we, that's what we expect.
All right, so this is when, one other thing, I mean, just a recommendation, if they do, I know we don't capture that many dogs here, because everybody, helps everybody out, but can we, I don't know what, say like a lineup or something, the dog, take a picture of the dog, say, hey, we just caught this dog over here on Lark, and you could pick him up at the shelter, you know, our Facebook, you know, profile there, so, because people look at Facebook, and, you know, they're looking for their dogs and stuff, and, you know, just additional service on there, that they could take a picture, you're, that's just something I'm just not about.
A little, a little, our things can pick up their license, run a big dog.
Yeah.
So, yes, we will make all efforts to return the dog to its owner prior to taking it to the shelter.
Okay. Well, I also know that, and I know the other council, we get bombarded with people talking about the San Bernardino County shelter and stuff, and we haven't had any complaints on Riverside County shelter?
We haven't received any. I don't believe we, I'm not sure when the last time, if ever, the city contracted with Riverside County. You may want to ask Mr. Miller or Dr. Drucese when that may have happened in the past.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
Further questions? All right, so, no questions, we'll open it up for public comment. Any requests to speak? No? All right, we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion. So, okay, you didn't have a form filled out. Go ahead, and I won't close public comment, go ahead and make your comment. Please state your name for the record.
Jeff Allen, Burnwood Street, Grand Terrace. So I just wanted to, I was noticing in this contract, Mayor, first of all, in a previous council meeting, council approved monies to purchase a electric truck, hybrid truck, and I thought that was very forward-thinking, and I was very proud of the city council for doing that, and I would like to encourage them in this, to use that same outlook with this vehicle and look for a hybrid vehicle for the dog catcher to use, because I think it'd be a great asset to the city, and it would save us a bunch of-
it'd be a great asset to the city, and it would save us a bunch of money if that's doable, use a hybrid vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. All right. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Receive and file, authorize the appropriation, authorize the city manager, approve a professional services agreement, and authorize the city manager to execute the associated agreements.
Councilmember Henderson, that would be with the amendment to the appropriation balances? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion with amended balances by Councilmember Henderson.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Hesse. Please vote.
Oh, Madam Mayor, I'm.
Mr. City Attorney.
I thought that, and I may not have understood what Director Molina said, I thought she was going to say with the amendments to the Riverside agreement, but that wasn't what you said?
No, it was to the appropriation, and also with regard to professional services agreement, the way the recommendation is, would allow for those changes, but certainly, the recommendation could include the updated agreement that was provided.
Yeah. If that's, if that's acceptable.
Is that acceptable to the maker of the motion?
That's my motion.
And, all right, so that's your second as well? All right. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with council members Henderson, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNambo voting yes.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, if I may, sorry for interrupting here, but it's come to my attention that in the item concerning the beer garden, that I'd like it stated on the record that Councilmember Henderson's vote was incorrectly due to technical error recorded. He was in favor of that motion. I'd like the record to deflect that.
Yes, the technical error was brain cramp.
Because we made it an inverse motion, right? Okay. All right. Thank you very much, and we'll move to count, oh, we won't move to city manager communications.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I just ran across an old friend from 30 years, Dr. Druce, so I just wanted to say hello to him.
Shall we wait?
No. No. Sorry about that.
Thank you for being here tonight, and we look forward to good service from the County of Riverside.
Just a few things. Just one reminder of the Evening Under the Stars with the Mayor's Annual State of the City address on this Thursday, starting at 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. There'll be networking. The Lewis Group will be there, the, some other developers will be there that are interested in the city, so it'll be a good opportunity for the council and the chamber to start having those conversations with the future developers. In addition to that, we have on May 6, 2018, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., the City Hall Art Show at City Hall, and we expect that's going to be a very nice event. In addition to that, there'll be a little bit of music there in addition to enjoy the art show. Also, I am a member of the League of California Cities Community Services Committee that recently met in Pomona. Mayor Protem is on the tax revenue committee also. So one of the things that they did was they recently presented a homeless task force report that was commissioned by the league and the 11 cities, big cities in California wrote the report. I provided a copy of the report to the council, and the report is also going to be posted online, so residents can actually go through and look at that. Just a quick note on that also, we recently had the 2018 Point-in-Time Homeless Count, where the, work with the county, where they go through, they review, and they try to find homeless to see it with our homeless populations in the community. So in this last endeavor that they had, they found, they discovered about two homeless individuals were discovered near Vivienda and Grand Terrace. But in addition to that, they found evidence of homeless, and the evidence would be such as old food cans, garbage, chairs, and old blankets throughout the city. One of the things that they look at, they call green zones, where they know that over the past three years, there were locations that were frequently visited by the homeless population. They've actually kind of gone through those green zones, some of them being near the old Stater Brothers site, Arco Station near Michigan and Barton Road. So they had about three green zones, but those that actually have been eliminated over time over the last couple of years. But one of the things the report also indicates is that the homeless population has actually, it was on the decline from 2007 to 2014, and it's picked up dramatically, and it's no longer an issue that's associated within large urban communities. It's going to wooded areas, and as the housing costs, increased affordable housing becomes a major issue. So multiple cities are having to deal with these types of information. And so, the homeless task force report tries to look at the multiple ways that different cities are actually trying to meet this challenge. So we'll keep the council and the community updated as we get more information on that.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you.
All right. So we will adjourn at this time, since we have no closed session. Our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 8, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting. We are adjourned.